Regular meeting for Thursday, December 1st, 2022 will now come to order. But ask that you silence your cell phones and also if you want to have a discuss one of the items as you bring the blue slips up to Jess. And we'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Barris. Oh, God bring, I'm sorry.
Let's pray. God, we love you. We thank you for this day. Just thank you for this time that we gathered, Father, to take care of the business of this parish. We just ask that you give us wisdom and discernment on the decisions we make tonight and that they please you, Father. We love you. We give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ebscher.
Here.
Mr. Angipah.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Vice President Barkey.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Killery.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markentel.
Here.
Mr. Reschard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Tremonte.
Here.
And President Stelling.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We will move to item two A, which is presentation of the results of the latest citizen survey conducted by the police jury. Mr. Beam.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back, going back to 2018, when you conducted your first formal strategic planning process, a key part of that is getting input from the public, of course, to help set your priorities. So beginning that first year in 2018, working with our consultants, Emergent Method, they had been doing a citizen survey. And so we did have to not, we didn't do one in 2020 and 2021 because of COVID and the storms, but we reinstituted that in 2022. And so they're here tonight to present the results of that. And they've been great to work with for the whole strategic plan, which of course y'all updated earlier this year, but we were going to do it annually. And so it's simply a summary of the latest from, from your citizens. John Snow is here on behalf of Emergent Method, along with Robin Styles. They, they put a lot of work in it and I would appreciate this time and ask that John come forward to the podium and, and present those results to you.
State your name and position, sir.
Sure. John Snow. I'm a partner at Emergent Method. Thank you, Brian, for the introduction. Thank you, members of the police jury, for, for having me. As Brian mentioned, this is the third time that we have gone through this survey process. I want to commend the police jury in the parish for going down this path. Sometimes it's a difficult task of looking yourself in the mirror and asking people what they really think. And it's not only asking the question about what you think, but then doing something with that data that you get back from asking the question. And I can say very confidently, having worked with the police jury departments for a number of years now, they do take this input very much to heart and very much incorporated into decision making, as well as, as you know, in the various iterations of the strategic plan. I will say a few themes to keep in mind as I go through the results of the citizen survey. One being, last time that we did the survey was in 2019. As you all know all too well, the world has changed very significantly over the last few years, particularly here in Calcasieu Parish. Some of the scores and the comments that we got back as a result were unsurprising. It's a very different world. Economic times were booming, but we've now seen numerous weather events, disasters, certainly the pandemic. So it's something to keep in the back of your mind in terms of how the results came out. I think the other thing, too, is that we saw a lot in the responses that there is still a sentiment or perception among residents that folks don't know who does what. That's city, parish, state, federal, even private sector insurance was actually brought up a number of times in, in the, in the responses. The parish is not involved in private sector insurance, but people have these perceptions. They want to get issues addressed. And so when they have an outlet to voice their perspectives, concerns, questions, then they want to use that to their advantage. But by and large, people don't always delineate between forms of government, even the private sector. And oftentimes, too, they don't really care. They just want to see a problem addressed. They want to see it fixed. I think that the third thing, too, that's important is that while maybe a lot of what we saw in the results and the data are the perceptions of people that maybe don't actually map back to the reality of how operations are currently formed, how the parish is structured, how it has responded to events, those perceptions for these individuals are their own reality. So in the case of where there may be input that actually does need to necessitate a change or a different mindset in terms of how programs or services are delivered, then let's take that into account. But if it's a perception issue, we need to make sure that we are being aggressive in our communications, our outreach and engagement to try and change that perception for the next time around. I'm going to start off with a little bit in terms of demographic data before I get into some of the actual results. So you can see here, a lot of the data we have presented tonight is relative to 2019, the last time we went through this survey. You can see here a significant uptick in participation, which is great. I really want to commend the parish, in particular Communications and Media, Tom Hafer's team, for really pushing this to get it out in the public, make sure that people use this opportunity to share their voice. The distribution in terms of how and where folks were completing this based on where they live largely mirrors, not exactly, but largely mirrors the population distribution across the parish. So we were really encouraged by having more than 200 more responses relative to last time and gave us some really good data to work with. Next slide here is respondent demographics. So we asked, how long have you lived in Calcasieu Parish? And then what your employment status was? There was significant participation, as you can see, from folks who have lived in Calcasieu Parish for a very long time, 30 years or more. As you might expect from folks who have been here for a very long time, a lot of those were people who are mid to late career and so currently employed or retired. So kind of keep that perspective as well as we're going through some of the data. But again, a lot of participation for people who have been here for a long time. They've seen the growth of the area. They've also been through and navigated numerous disasters, including those in recent years. We asked folks to rate a, the functions that you see here on the left in terms of their overall satisfaction with the performance of these functions. And as you can see here, there were nine total. Seven of these indicators decreased from 2019. One significantly increased, Public Works. A couple of comments here in terms of just how the score shook out. Again, we have to keep in mind the mindset of folks who are completing this, that 2019, very different from 2022. So if you're looking at satisfaction and performance of government functions, our hypothesis even going into this was that you were going to see lower results across the board. I want to point out Planning Development, which was the lowest in 2019 and the lowest in 2022. I don't, this is not meant to pick on Wes Crane's team, but more from the perspective of think back to 2019. Economic was, the economy was booming. Folks were frustrated because the economy was booming and there was a lot of development activity and you want to take it out on the folks involving planning. Fast forward to today, we're in recovery mode still. And so again, people trying to channel frustration. So I think people look at a function and it's not necessarily rating a department's performance, but more the function and how that impacts their daily lives. I do want to commend Public Works here. You see a pretty significant jump from 2.6 in 2019 to 3.5 in 2022. I know one of the, the byproducts of the last time that we did the survey was there were a lot of comments in the survey around folks really not feeling as though Public Works had crews out doing what they need to do, were being responsive to issues. And, and I know in response, Alan Wainwright and his team, Tom Hafer and the team in Communications and Media have really accelerated the art of storytelling to make sure that people knew that we're out doing the good work that they're expecting of us. And so when you have a survey like this, that's meant to measure perception and attitude towards specific functions, I think Public Works, you can see here, people are generally pleased with the increase in performance, but I think a lot of that goes into the emphasis that the parish has placed on storytelling and connecting with those residents that we serve in key areas. We asked folks how often and where they most frequently interacted with parish government. You can see here a mix between, you know, visiting a parish park or facility, visiting the disposal site, paying a bill, requesting a service. A lot of responses were from folks who said they don't typically interact with parish government, significant increase from 2022 to 2019. I think a lot of this is attributed to, as we saw some of the responses trickle in, the real heavy push and growth that we've seen in the parish's social media accounts. So pushing the word out, trying to get folks to complete this survey. Folks may not interact or perceive they have any regular interaction with parish government, but seeing the availability of a survey, following the parish, parish government, CPPJ Facebook page, Twitter account, we've really seen a rise in social media for overall communications. And certainly the population growth in terms of those who follow and track parish activities has grown as a result. I think you see that represented right here in the data. We asked a question on a three-point scale. What changes have you seen in priority areas? These are largely mirroring the priority areas that are contained within the latest version of your three-year strategic plan. We asked folks on a scale of one to three, how they would rate each of these areas, three being better, two being no change, and one being worse. You can see here disaster recovery is near, near, or at the top, rather, with a score of 2.2, followed by litter at 2.1, facilitating parish-wide development at 2.1, and then so forth. Traffic, transportation, drainage and infrastructure, again, not a surprise, given some of the frustrations, needs and challenges that residents have been through over the past couple of years in particular, and infrastructure being something that they point to again and again that they're looking for major changes and investments in. So we then asked, how can the police jury improve upon these services? These are really the four sort of thematic areas that rose the most to the top. No surprise, address drainage issues, litter issues, public infrastructure and roads. I would also add within that, we saw a lot of comments around reduce blight, move more quickly on condemnations, hold people accountable in terms of just overall how they're littering, how they're contributing to quality of life in the area. So I would lump all of that in that area. I know that the parish was making a lot of great progress in the area of litter reduction prior to the storms, had some setbacks, had a lot of priorities. There's still a, a great demand among the public to see those efforts sort of continued build upon from the, the progress we were seeing there. The second piece, increase employee engagement and supervisor effectiveness. I think it really comes down to folks feel as though they want to see greater responsiveness from the parish when they ask for things. And again, putting ourselves in the minds of people who are waiting on a lot of things from a lot of different people and a lot of different government entities, there's a desire to see government move more quickly. And so I think that's one where we can really take that into account and figure out, are there programs and services that maybe we can be delivering more quickly and/or managing expectations? That some things just unfortunately take a long time. And so do folks really understand all that's going on behind the scenes? It's not that they're being forgotten or neglected, but there are wheels that have to churn and sometimes that operates unfortunately at the pace of government. So I think in both cases, it can be a program and service enhancement issue as well as a communication issue. There was also a desire for greater accountability, which I thought was interesting, you know, folks not getting what they want and then folks quickly saying, well, these people need to be held responsible for doing the work that I'm demanding of them. I think, too, it's a, it's a bit of the disconnect between, not to say that services should not be delivered extremely efficiently, but when you look at the state of workforce and what we've seen, and as you all know, know all too well, the, the work in the worlds that local government has been through over the last few years, it's been a really challenging time. And all the things that we're trying to do and please all people as a result. So again, I think it comes down, a lot of that back to communication and help people understand that government is working for you and know it may not be as quickly as we would all would like, but it is still working for you. This third piece here surrounding reducing traffic issues and planning work around peak traffic times, we saw a lot of requests for enhanced transportation, fix potholes, improve connectivity, do better road maintenance, and also do so without inconveniencing me in my daily commute. So folks want to see more and more work on roads, but not in a way that is going to be uncoordinated or impacting your daily worlds. This is not a surprise when you ask people how they feel about local government. Transportation and drainage are going to be the top of everyone's list and we certainly know that there's some work to be done there. This last piece is ensuring that aid and help are distributed equitably throughout the whole parish. There were some kinds of concerns that in some areas that folks are responded to more quickly than others. Some folks feel as though they've been neglected over the years, haven't been heard over the years. So again, an area that we can really delve into and understand, is this perception, is this reality, certain of this reality, how we can go about fixing it? And if it's a perception, how we can make sure that we're communicating with all folks in the parish and helping them understand that they are being heard, they are being seen, and that they are being responded to. We asked about overall satisfaction with customer service from police jury employees. You can see here the averages from 2022 and 2019 largely the same, slight decrease, but not in a material way from 2019 to 2022. And again, this is kind of held constant from, from the two. So it's not all the way at the top five-point scale, but it certainly is not on the lower, lower portion with 2.5 being the midpoint there. We asked also, do you know where to go to resolve specific issues? The good news is that awareness is improving. You can see here in the middle that sometimes improved quite a bit, yes, improved quite a bit, no, increased, but not proportionally as much as sometimes and yes. We did see some lower average scores in areas like Iowa, Bell City, Hayes, that were the least likely to state that they generally knew where to go to find the resources that they need. I think that that's true, the further and further out you get from densely populated areas, that folks are not as connected with local government, they're not as connected or in the know. And so not really knowing how to understand and navigate all of the different elements of parish government, I say that in air quotes because it could just be government in general that they're associating to be parish, but knowing how, how to go and get what they need in order to make decisions. Some of the challenges that were mentioned include having difficulty reaching the right person or department, the nature of the issues involving drainage and sewer primarily being difficult to address. And then others spoke to how the website is useful and it's certainly been improved over the years, but sometimes can be a little more difficult to navigate. So that being an area particularly again on the communication side that we can definitely improve upon. We asked about satisfaction with responses to recent events, namely the pandemic and the weather events. As you can see here, roughly the same average score on the pandemic side, more folks felt neutral about it. And then on the weather event side, you see more folks who were generally satisfied with a response. Digging into recommendations for better support during the pandemic, I don't want to say it was universally, but almost universally, people were ready to stop talking about the pandemic. And so as you can see here, desire to return back to normal life was overall, there were some, there were some comments around, why are you even asking this question? And I've moved on and we all should too. I think folks are ready to be done with the pandemic, particularly given all the other issues and challenges that y'all have faced as a community over these past few years. When we asked about recommendations for improving service following weather events, overwhelmingly it was the response surrounding debris removal and in the aftermath of events. And when I say aftermath, that includes bureaucratic red tape, damage assessments, again debris removal, internet connectivity, drainage, et cetera. Internet connectivity was something that came up a handful of times. And again, does the parish have anything to do with delivering internet services? No, but it is something where people don't delineate between who does what, but this is a need that we have in the aftermath of a storm. And so we want to make our voices heard surrounding that. And a lot of folks were, were very complimentary and felt as though the parish has done what it needs to do in regard to this type of event. I included this quote here because I thought it was a really good one and packages up a lot of what we saw here in terms of how the parish has responded to weather events. The parish has a lot of good leaders and staff who have a lot of experience in dealing with weather events. Keep observing what other communities are doing and stay current on any new ways others are preparing for and responding. And again, that kind of packages up the sentiment that folks feel as though there has been good response, obviously. And unfortunately, we have a lot of folks who have been through the wringer who are on staff, but we also shouldn't rest on our laurels. We should always strive to learn more, do better, learn from other communities, learn from ourselves in our most recent response about how we can be better, more equipped and more responsive the next time around. We asked about people's likelihood of recommending Calcasieu Parish as a place to live. You can see here, this dropped very significantly from 2019, which, which is no surprise. It was very high, 71.7% in 2019, dropped down to 42% in this most recent survey. When you look at things like the significant weather events, flooding, the end of the economic boom, at least as previously constituted here in the region, people, people have been through some rough patches here. I think this one very much ties into the second priority in your strategic plan surrounding, focusing on quality of life. If y'all remember when we had our retreat, I think late last year, and we were talking about the potential strategic priorities to include in this most recent version of your three-year plan, there was strong desire among this body to escalate quality of life up through the rankings. The priorities are not listed in a specific order, but you all felt very strongly that quality of life needed to be at the top of the list for very obvious reasons, and that's reflected here, I think, in the data. And one of the things, the tweaks that we made to the language relative to the last strategic plan was changing the language from making Calcasieu Parish a place people want to call home to making it a place people can and want to call home. People may want to call it home, but they feel as though they can't for a variety of reasons. And so I think this reinforces the reason why that is such a priority in your strategic plan and that a lot of these comments focus around generally quality of life and the strides that we need to make toward improving that to ensure that people can and want to call Calcasieu Place, Calcasieu Parish, a place that they, that they want to live and call home. A number of, a few other comments when we asked for a general catch-all, do you have any additional thoughts, insights or feedback that the police jury would benefit from hearing? There were a number of responses, again, surrounding drainage and sewer maintenance being a priority, the desire for the cities and the parish to work collaboratively to address common or shared issues. There were a number of comments around issues within city of Lake Charles proper that need to be addressed, and then request for more access to and transparency, transparency from the police jury. And I think this is generally folks who want to understand what's going on, they want to feel connected, they're not entirely sure how to stay or be connected. And so again, it was general frustration of wanting to ensure that they have a full understanding of what's happening within the parish, within the police jury, within the departments, how decisions are being made, and then ultimately how they are impacting folks' daily lives. Lastly, I wanted to pull a handful of direct quotes from the survey to leave you with. And these were all contained largely in those additional thoughts, insights and feedback. The first being, I relocated Louisiana, not for what it has to offer, but for close proximity to the family. Laura and Delta were devastated in this region, even more so in the economic environment in which we previously were operating. I'm thankful for our leaders as well as public service workers. However, it's very frustrating when little things can easily be a lot better, like public service drops trash or refuses to pick up. The cost of living in the area is too high for the rate of pay that most people receive, so people can no longer afford to buy homes in the area. Longtime citizens will continue to leave if there is not a solution soon. I do appreciate the efforts of the CPPJ. It's a tough job, especially after Hurricane Laura. Recovery takes time. I will also say, just in closing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or comments you may have, I mentioned earlier that we've done this now, this is the third iteration of this, this survey. We've also done significant surveying of the employee population within the police jury. I feel very confidently, having seen it in practice in, in the years that we've had the fortune of working with your team at the police jury, they read every element of these reports and the input from those outside the police jury as well as those inside it. And you can see that reflected in the strategic plan that you previously adopted, as well as the one that's currently in place now. Y'all have a collectively strong track record of responding to feedback. We want to celebrate the wins for sure. And where we have wins, let's figure out how we can do more of them across the parish and where there are areas that we have that we can do better. I know that those are areas and issues and comments that your team, certainly all of you as jurors are listening intently to and ways to constantly improve and strive to do better. So thank you again for the time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John? Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your report and your work. I guess I'm just curious. You know, like some of the services that, that we were looking at, the line items, public works, mosquito control, things like that, you know, and then road conditions and potholes and things like that. You know, I'm just wondering if some of the responses in some of the incorporated areas tanked the job that some of those departments, those people would never really even see. People in town don't know what a red truck looks like. People in Colorado, they like to see the red trucks. And you know what I'm saying? And mosquito control. And then the roads. I mean, the roads, I, I think we've got an unbelievable road, you know, maintenance program. So I just, I'm just curious as to what, you know, how much of that, if, if we could, if I could see some numbers, maybe somebody else would like it too. You know, the unincorporated areas, you know, just by themselves, not that the incorporated areas don't matter, but I, you know what I mean? I just, I don't think that those departments, there's a lot of opportunity for them to get hosed. I just, I would be curious to see, you know, you know, those numbers.
Yeah, we, we can pull sort of a slice of that data relative to incorporated, unincorporated. I think, again, and I mentioned this a couple of times, I think when you give people an opportunity to provide feedback, those that are generally pleased with things don't often. It's rare that people take the time to write in and say, you're doing a great job. Thanks for all you do. We would hope that we would get more of that, but the unfortunate reality is you don't. So I think when you're asking questions, you're more often than not going to get people who have something on their mind, probably a recency factor, and more often than not maybe negative or constructive. So I'd imagine a lot of that played into it, but we can certainly slice that data a different way and get it to you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? What percentage do you think this was of the respondents?
Population?
Population-wise.
So to calculate off the top of my head.
Well, if I could.
Sure, please.
Mr. President, Mr. Markentel, excuse me, this, was it 700?
800.
800. You, you've got a population of a little over 200,000. We made the, the decision when we started this, and there's all sorts of ways, as y'all know, to poll people. This by intent is a voluntary, you go to a website and fill it out. So statistically, you know, is it a statistical sample? No, but I, I don't want anybody thinking it's not significant. So trying to answer your question, I can't do the math in my head, but 800 out of 200,000. But we could do that, but this is to kind of just get a sense, what's the public thinking? I feel confident, confident, and in talking to John and Robin, they do too, that for this type of survey, this, this is good for what it is. If you do, you know, they or anybody else is, is able to go a lot deeper and do more intricate survey tools, but it, it depends what you're asking, but I hope that answers your question a little.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We will now go to item one A, which is a 545 hearing. Ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. One A is 2951 Flora Road, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Do I have anyone in the audience to speak on that item? Did you want to say something about one A? Go ahead. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Candace Skinner, 3005 Common Street is my office address here in Lake Charles. Yeah, I am following back up with you all about recently had the property transferred, the owner donated it to us, to myself, as we had more resources to, to help bring the property to a better state. And we're asking that you all would remove it from the demolition list or condemnation list. And I did send some information, I sent that over today to Mr. Crane's office, just to show you kind of what the plan is going forward.
Mr. Brain.
Mr. Crane.
Crane first.
I was going to refer to Mr. Crane.
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we have received some information from Ms. Skinner regarding the repairs to the structure, and we're asking that we have some more time to review that information, if you would grant us that, grant us that time until December the fifteenth to review that and then bring it back to you.
Yeah, and I spoke with Wes about this today. You done?
Yes, sir.
Today, and I also spoke with Mr. Landry about it, and we will, since we just got what you turned in today...
Took me a bit to get everything.
Yeah. Wes's office needs a little bit more time, so we'll give you to the next meeting, I think it's the fifteenth.
December fifteenth.
Okay.
Jessica?
December fifteenth.
So I'm going to make a motion to defer to the fifteenth. Okay.
A motion by Mr. Brain to defer till December fifteenth, and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. It has been deferred. Item 1B, 5766 Lisa Lane, Vinton, Ward 7. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Anyone in the audience to speak on 1B? Mr. Crane?
We were going to recommend that this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Onderpoint. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. It will be condemned and removed in thirty days. Now we will move on to 3A. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. Mr. Barris?
I'm guessing we're all good to go with this. John's here. I move to adopt.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 3A carries. 3B...
Move on 3B.
Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for the Packing House Road Multi-Bridges Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Guillory. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Seeing none. 3B carries. 3C. Adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction servitude agreement for the Gum Cove Road Bridge Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti...
Second.
And a second by Mr. Markentell. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 3C passes. Item 4A...
Move on 4A.
Approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends two renewal applications be approved. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? 4A passes. 4B. Adopt a resolution to rename Wagon Lane in Ward 3 to Salt Grass Lane.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4B passes. 4C. Adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances for the Parish of Calcasieu, Louisiana, to establish provisions for solar energy facilities. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Yeah, this is sort of our last step in adopting this particular ordinance for the parish. We have received feedback, none that has indicated not to adopt this ordinance, and we've worked out some of those issues with the individuals that have submitted that. However, I do have a request for an amendment, and that is, and I sent this to y'all earlier in the week, and that is to have any exterior light fixture installed on the premise of the solar facility property located in A1 agricultural zones be a dark-skies certified light fixture or equivalent. And I would appreciate y'all considering that.
Move to adopt with that. Second. Move to adopt with condition by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Markentell. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Go ahead, Mr. Brain.
So Wes, you did say you had some opposition, or what did you say?
We had some...
Public comment?
We had public comment. But we feel like that we've addressed those issues in the ordinance, and so...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. 4D. Adopt a resolution amending the fee schedule utilized by the Division of Planning and Development to include solar energy facilities. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4D passes. 4E. Authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. 1, 1868 Marlin Road, Moss Bluff, Ward 1. 2, 150 Farquhar Lane, Number 6, Moss Bluff, Ward 1. Number 3, 5529 Thelma Lane, East Lake Charles, Ward 3. Number 4, 1598 Goss Road, Moss Bluff, Ward 1. Item 5, 2415 South Constance Lane, Lake Charles, Ward 3. Item 6, 2500 Drum Drive, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Item 7, 918 La Blue Road, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Item 8, 2400 Green Briar Road, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Number 9, 2417 Green Briar Road, Lake Charles, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Number 10, 5832 Landry Road, South Lake Charles, Ward 3. Number 11, 7491 Pine Alley, Southwest Lake Charles, Ward 3. Item 12, 4215 Highway 12, Starks, Ward 5. Number 13, southeast of 1041 Straight Drive, Carless, Ward 4. Item 14, 161 Boyd Landry Road, Carless, Ward 4. Number 15, 3922 Sherry Street, Carless, Ward 4. Item 16, 2955 Hereford Road, West Lake, Ward 4. Item 17, 4341 East Burden Street, Mossville, Ward 4. Item 18, 2404 Galen Drive, Selfer, Ward 4. Item 19, 2305 Galen Drive, Selfer, Ward 4. Item 20, 748 Joshua Ryan Street, Selfer, Ward 4.
Move on all bullets.
Second. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. All of the items pass. Item 5A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November third, two thousand and twenty-two. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5A passes. 5B. Approve the Budget Committee report dated December one, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Onderpoint?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Budget Committee and the police jury met today at 5:00 PM and held a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2023. After allowing for public comments and consideration by the committee, the committee recommends approval for the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2023 at the police jury's regular meeting on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This concludes my report, and I move on behalf of the committee.
I have a motion by Mr. Onderpoint and a second by Mr. Markentell on 5B. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5B passes. 5C. Adopt a resolution approving a call by the Board of Commissioners of Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 3 to renew, levy, and collect a tax of five and five-tenth mills on all properties subject to taxation in the district for a period of ten years for the purpose of maintaining and operating recreation facilities owned or used by the district. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5C passes. 5D. Adopt a resolution in support of the Disaster Relief Flexibility Act to provide additional flexibility in use of local fiscal recovery fund dollars authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 6A, excuse me, 6, 5D carries, 6A. Adopt a resolution approving a professional services consulting contract between the police jury and the Educational Treatment Council Incorporated for emergency shelter care and treatment services for children and families in Calcasieu Parish.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Guillory. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 6A passes. 7A. Adopt an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Calcasieu, Louisiana...
Move on 7A.
To modify contract requirements on bids for public improvement jobs. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Onderpoint. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7A passes. 7B. Adopt resolutions approving general operational authority for the calendar year 2023. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7B passes. 8A...
Move on 8A.
Approve all, approve payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Onderpoint and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 8A passes. 8B. Advertise for bids for miscellaneous roadway improvements of various roads. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 8B passes. 8C. Action on bids for mosquito control solvents and products. Staff recommends the bids of MIGAS fuel and lubricants and Rinca-Til North America and DBA target specialty products be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentell and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 8C passes. 8D. Action on bids for mosquito control chemicals. Staff recommends the bids of ADAPCO LLC, Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated, ES OpCo USA LLC, doing business as Visarius and Rinca-Til North America. DBA target specialties products be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? I mean, Mr. Burley and Mr. Barris, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 8D passes. 8E. Action on bids for uniform purchases. Staff recommends the bids of Acadian Promotional Products Incorporated, Barney's Incorporated, Centa Sales of Louisiana, Jonah's Enterprises Incorporated, and Uniformly Fit LLC be accepted. I have a motion on Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Richard. Someone to speak?
No.
Want to speak? Hearing, is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 8E passes. Board appointments. 9A...
Move to appoint Mark McMurray.
Calcasieu Cameron Hospital Service District. No. Yep. I have a motion by Mr. Onderpoint and a second by Mr. Tremonti to appoint Mr. Mark McMurray because of the resignation of Mr. Frank LeBarber. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Mark McMurray is appointed. 9B...
Move to appoint Mr. Theo Chantlin.
Community Center and Playground District, Number 4 of Ward 1. Mr. Jonathan Simeon's resignation, and the motion is to appoint Mr. Theo Chantlin. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 9B carries. 9C. Consolidated Gravity Drainage District, Number 2.
Move to appoint Mr. John Ryon?
I have a motion to appoint Mr. John Ryon by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Hayes due to the death of Mr. Clinton Leger. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 9C passes. 9D. Recreation District, Number 1 of Ward 4. Mr. George Ackle is deceased, and the motion is to appoint Mr. Timothy Newsom by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 9D carries. 9E...
Move to appoint...
Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Brain to appoint Mr. Nathaniel Allard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Allard is appointed. Oh, I'm sorry, Al Ured. Okay. That's not Trow. Mr. Rob King. Item 2 is Mr. Rob King...
Move on to appoint Eric Avery.
For the restaurant industry. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Brain to appoint Mr. Eric Avery. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Eric Avery is appointed. 9F. Ward 6, Fire Protection District, Number 1.
Move to appoint Mr. Foster.
I have a motion by Mr. Markentell and a second by Mr. Richard to appoint Mr. Joshua Foster due to the, Mr. Garland Royer has, is deceased. Have a, is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Joshua Foster is appointed. Item 2...
Move to appoint Mr. Williams.
Mr. Farrell Swallow. Because of resignation, the motion is to appoint Mr. Roderick Williams by Mr. Markentell and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Roderick Williams is appointed. 9G. West Calcasieu Community Center Authority. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Markentell to reappoint Ms. Evelyn White. Item 10, is there any discussion on that? Any objection? Hearing none. Ms. Evelyn White is reappointed. 910 are advised items. Lie 11A. Adopt a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Philip Michael Connor. Mr. Abshar?
Thank you, sir. Might be tough. I lived a couple of doors down from the Connor family and had the pleasure of knowing Philip from a very young age. He and my son were only a few months apart. Able to watch him grow into a fine young man while he attended ICCS in St. Louis. He was a son, a brother, an uncle. He loved playing soccer and hunting and all things outdoors. Philip was a child of God and had a very strong faith. His faith that allows his mother and father to carry on and his brother and sister. In his short, nearly seventeen years, he touched many lives and will never be forgotten. We, as a parish, need to work to prevent tragedies such as these. It's my hope that we can address these rural areas of our parish and do something to enhance lighting and traffic signs in these dark corners of our parish. Truly a tragedy what happened to Philip. But I think we can all learn, we can move forward. My thoughts and prayers are with his family in these times. The days they had are going to be very tough for them, but their faith is strong and will help them to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Abshar. 11B. Adopt a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Barbara Boutte-Adams. Mr. Guillory?
Yes, I just want to say that Ms. Adams was, worked at the DA office for more than thirty years. She helped a lot of people in the community, and many prayers, I just want to say, many prayers goes out to her family and everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to just read this, that Christmas at the courthouse tomorrow begins at 3:30, lights on at 5:30. How the Grinch Stole Christmas after the lights, and there will be free popcorn, cotton candy, candy canes, and hot chocolate. So, every one of 10 is going to be very nice. I have a point of personal, I'm sorry.
We're having movies under the stars tomorrow night?
I think this might be How the Grinch Stole Christmas after the lights, Mr. Barris, not sure.
Okay, so it's going to rain.
He may be hanging in the trees after...
Big of the Grinches.
I have a point of personal privilege by Mr. Barti.
I just want to say something on behalf of all of you guys, and I hope I'm representing you guys correctly. We just want to say something to our president, Tony Stellie, and the loss of his mother, just to let you know that you and your family are in our thoughts and prayers, and we understand that it's probably going to be a difficult few days for you, but as a jury, we just want to let you know that, you know, if you need anything from us, I'm sure we're here for you.
Thank you so much. And I also have a point of personal privilege by Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if any of you had ever had the honor of listening to the Orenos sing. They were leaders in the gospel music field, continue to be that way. I would like to, on behalf of the jury as well, Anthony, express our condolences for Nathan's losing his dad. I was able to listen to the Orenos when they sang with the Martins at the old WW Lewis Auditorium years ago, and it was a spiritual happening, I assure you, it was great. Nathan, we're sorry for you, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I need a motion to return.
Move to adjourn.